I call the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Victorville and the City Council Sitting at the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, and Victorville Water District. And the first order of business is a closed session agenda.
Mayor Cabralis, we have five items listed. Actually, fortunately, we really don't need discussions with respect to items one, two, and three. Item three, it looks like we are on the eve of a settlement. Items one and two, as I briefed you previously, the parties have requested the Caltrans hearing. We'll discuss it briefly in closed session if you want to, but I'm going to go to the council agenda with respect to resolutions of necessity. So we just have closed session, then with respect to items four and five, and to the extent there is any reportable action, we will come out and report the actions.
Meeting of the Victorville City Council. This video is intended to provide you with a brief overview of the protocol to follow when attending a city council meeting and instructions for addressing the city council. As you enter the foyer, you will see a table which will have copies of the agendas for the city council meeting, as well as the other boards on which the city council serves. The agendas for these meetings will assist you in following along with the city council as they conduct the business of the city. In addition, you will find white public comment cards that you will need to complete and submit to the city clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting if you wish to speak on any particular agenda item. It is requested that you include your name, address, and phone number in order that the staff or council members may communicate with you in the future if necessary. The city clerk will turn the public comment cards into the mayor. The mayor will then call the name of each person submitting a card when it is their turn to speak on an agenda item. As their name is called, each speaker should approach the podium, wait to be acknowledged by the mayor to speak, and then clearly state their name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes, and their comments should be directed at the mayor and not to members of the audience. Please note that the first item on each agenda is titled "Public Comment." This section provides an opportunity for people to address the city council on an item that does not appear on the regular agenda. In accordance with state law, the city council is unable to take any action on an item that is not properly agendized. Lastly, as a matter of courtesy and in order to maintain decorum, it is requested that meeting attendees turn off your cellphone or place it on vibrate during the conduct of the meeting. Thank you for attending the meeting and for your interest in the City of Victorville. We hope you will find your experience attending a city council meeting to be an enjoyable and informative one.
I will now reconvene the regular meetings of the Library Board of Trustees, Southern California Logistics Rail Authority, Southern California Logistics Airport Authority, Victorville Redevelopment Agency, the Victorville Water District, and City Council of the City of Victorville. As customary, what will have implication, it will be delivered by Pastor John Martin of the Victorville First Assembly of God Church. Then that will be followed by a Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by our Chief of Police, Captain Reynolds.
Let's pray together. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity that we have this evening to meet together as a city, and we thank you, Lord, for these leaders. We pray your blessing upon them. We pray, Lord, that your wisdom would be given to our mayor and to each council member. And for the decisions that are before us tonight, we ask that you would give us the ability to move our city forward into the future in a way that would be appropriate. We thank you for guiding us and directing us. We thank you, Lord, for ministering to us in Jesus' name. Amen.
...
We now have some presentations for the city council.
Mayor Cabralis, if I may, just want to report from the closed session at 5:00 tonight. There was no reportable action as a result of the closed session items.
Thank you. Tonight, we are recognizing two service people from the military, and it's our Military Banner Program. And we do have Kelly Han. She's in the Army, serving in Iraq. She is a 1998 graduate of Victor Valley High School. Her father and mother are here. She accepted the certificate, and of course, we have her banner, which tomorrow or the next day after will be on the light standard in the cities of Victorville. I would like to have the mother and father of Kelly Han step forward. My pleasure to present this certificate. As the City of Victorville salutes to Kelly Han. Thank you for serving our country. We would like to have this presented to you, and of course, her banner will be in one of the light standards in our city tomorrow, the next day. So can you please stand this way, please? Well, Kelly's a graduate of Victor Valley High School. Couldn't stand me any longer and decided she wanted to see the world and join the Army. Here in Iraq is a picnic compared to what she went through in Korea. There were several times in El Paso, when she, after she got back in Korea, she went and wants to see her when she made E6. And the second time we went back to see her is when she got her commission as an officer in the United States. I graduated from UTEP, University of Texas, El Paso. And I know she'll really appreciate receiving this. I really thank Victorville for doing this, for their GIs. Very much, and thank Kelly. Thank you. Our next presentation is for Albert G. Vadevis. Vadevis, he's in Air Force, currently serving in Afghanistan. His wife and son are here. Will they please come forward? And again, we're very proud to present you with this certificate for Albert Vadevis, thanking him for serving our country. And again, his banner will be displayed on one of our standards in the couple of days. Thank him, and thank you for his service. And I'll let you say a few words.
Good evening, everybody. Tonight, I'm just going to speak a little bit about my father. A lot of people, they might say, "I have a great father. I have the best dad in the world." But I feel personally that my father, he is truly a great father. The thing that I love about my dad the most is no matter what I want to do, if I want to be an actor, if I want to be an astronaut, no matter what I want to be in life, he'll encourage me and he'll back me up 100 percent. And he always has faith in me, no matter what it is I want to do. And that helps me believe that I can achieve my goals that I want to achieve in life. So that's one thing that I love about my father. Another thing that I love about him is that he, since I was a little kid, he's always worked hard to provide for my mom and my sister and I. He'll spend his money on me and my sister so that we can have the nicest clothes, and he'll skip out on having the nicest clothes. He won't look the best, but we will because he'll sacrifice for us because he loves us. And he's always been a hard-working man. He has two jobs. Sometimes he'll go a month or two without even a day of rest. He won't have a day off. He'll just work straight, 30 to 60 days at a time. And he works out in the hot desert, the sun, at Fort Irwin. I don't know how he does it. And he gets up at like 2:00 in the morning. It's crazy. And one thing that I've learned about my father being over there in Afghanistan is that really, we take things for advantage. Like, this summer's been very hard for me. There's just been, there'll be problems or something that'll come up. And before, I didn't talk to my dad that much. I would always be in and out of the house. I'm not really home that much. And he would always say, "You don't talk to me. You don't tell me what's going on." But he would still let me go hang out with my friends, which I never got. Like, you'd think he would want to keep me back, but he didn't. He let me go out. And I really learned that without having him there, it's just a lot harder because there's been a lot of things that I've had to deal with, and I really needed him there for me, and I couldn't talk to him. I could talk to him on the phone every once in a while, but it's just not the same as actually having him there and saying, "Hey, Dad, this is what's up. I really need you, and I need your advice." And so one thing I've really learned is just for all of you, if you have a family member, a loved one, don't take it for advantage, just take advantage of having them there. Just cherish every moment that you have with them, because one day, you're not going to have them, and they're not going to be there for you. So just cherish every moment that you have with them. Thank you.
We also have a presentation from our friend from Edison, Nancy Jackson.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you very much for allowing me to have a few minutes just to give you an update on what's happening with Edison. And freedom is not free. I just wanted to say that we applaud the servicemen and women for the country. Just very quickly, Edison, we're still building and still improving and still catching up on our infrastructure. Even though the economy is down, we still are somewhat behind it, all with regard to making sure that our infrastructure is strong. So we're in the process of still building and trying to catch up with the needs of our customers. We're looking to add 45,000 to 50,000 new customers annually. So again, hence our reason to try to catch up with our customers' needs and making sure we're there for them. We're looking to invest $20 billion in the next 10 years to do such that, to do just that thing, investing in transmission and energy efficiency programs, hybrid cars, advanced metering, electric technology, leadership. A lot of that infrastructure and money is going into that. We're looking at investing also in renewables. We have a commitment to the State of California to get to 20 percent of our portfolio by the year 2010. We're about at 16 and a half, actually about 16, 70 percent. And so moving forward, we're looking to do 33 percent by the year 2020. So you no doubt have heard a great deal about some of the activity that's happening in our region to complement that kind of need for the State of California as far as wind technology and solar technology. So we're building and moving toward that too, so that we can be compliant to our state. We're looking also to invest in energy efficiencies. So in light of the economic downturn, many things that we're doing on behalf of our customers, we're stepping up our communication to them to let them know what they can do with regard to engaging Edison programs and services. With regard to, we have income-qualified programs that will give them 20 percent off on their bill. We have medical baseline will help our customers who have special needs, customers, payment arrangements, level payment plans, summer discount programs. So we're stepping up our communication to our customers, realizing that there's a whole new class of customers out there who have lost their jobs, who maybe have never experienced the need to come out and ask. So we're actually doing what we can to give that information out to them. Specifically for the City of Victorville, we are happy to report that we're completely finished with the Niskwali Undergrounding Project. That took a number of years, but we're completely done with that with regard to the cutovers, removing the poles. We had some outstanding streetlight issues, and I think that's already taken care of too. So the undergrounding for Niskwali Road, I know that was very, very important to the City of Victorville. We're completely done with that, so we have to, I'm very happy about that. With regard to the franchise payment, we were able to give the City of Victorville over a million dollars because of all the growth that occurred in this city. And so that was been, that has been given to the city. We're also investing $60 million-plus dollars in the City of Victorville to upgrade substations, distribution projects, circuit reliability, right here in this city. And let me talk just a few minutes, because I may look like I'm rushing. With regard to rate increases that have been sent forth, there was a 2.5 rate increase the second quarter of this year, and probably another 2.5 that's coming for the third quarter of the year, average for our customers. And so just to let you know that that is coming. And we are educating our customers with regard to what they can do to, again, engage in not only energy efficiencies, but creative programs that may help them to, may help them as those rate increases come forth. We do have an energy efficiency account manager, Sandy Gabriel, who works very closely with the City of Victorville to make sure that your rates are what they should be and to answer any questions that you have, because what we found is the City of Victorville is very, very good about engaging in these programs. And so I want to honor you for your leadership in that position with regard to using and moving forward with energy efficiency. It is our privilege to work with the City of Victorville, and do not take that lightly with regard to our partnering efforts with the city and our customers here. So that really pretty much concludes my presentation. I didn't want to give it to you in paper format. If you want it, you can give me a call to my office. I'll be happy to shoot you a copy of it. But we're always available to you. You have my phone number and my email address, nancy.jackson@sc.com. And our customers are always available to contact us, our 800 number. Let me know if there's anything else I can do for you, if you have any questions or comments.
Any questions?
That was pretty quick.
Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have Eric Gold with Dr. Pepper Snapple Group, who'll make a presentation also.
Eric Gold. Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'd like to take a few minutes to give an update on progress of our Victorville Western Regional Manufacturing and Distribution Site. Several of you have seen it passing by, and it's rather an amazing site, and wanted to give just a couple of minutes update to take us through what's going on. Now, I'm Eric Gold. I'm the Director of Engineering for Dr. Pepper Snapple Group, and specifically, I'm the Lead Engineer on this project. Currently, at our production facility and manufacturing facility, we have had all of our wall panels have been erected, and right now, we are waiting on just a few more wall panels, which include our administrative and some other miscellaneous buildings, which will have some walls tilted in the upcoming weeks prior to September. We have about 30 percent of our structural steel, as well as our ceiling panels, erected at this current time, and we have production and support equipment being manufactured from multiple locations all over. Our support equipment, including boilers, refrigeration, water treatment systems, heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems, as well as air compressors, are being scheduled to come in over the upcoming weeks and starting to get installed. We have, currently, our schedule looks as though we will be starting up our warehouse operations, as well as our manufacturing. We'll be starting up the first quarter of 2010. We will be, in addition to this, we will be looking at putting together some job fairs and some recruitment initiatives towards the end of the year and to the fall of this year. So we'll be giving a little bit more detail on that as that progresses through the remainder of the year. Apparently, what we have here is we have a rendering of the facing of our facility. This is the facing our administrative offices at the southeast corner of the property of our 850,000-square-foot facility. We've, we get aerial shots taken of the progress on our facility every two weeks. This is the most recent, which was taken on August 14th, and you'd see quite a bit of progress on the left side of the screen, which is the south end of the facility, which is, most of our production facility is on the roof right now, moving on to the warehouse, which is to the right, which is the northernmost region of the facility. Some pictures of some of the progress here. What we have is some of the wall tilting. This is just one panel going in from the over 100 panels that make up the full construction of our site. Quite a feat to watch the 200-ton crane moving these in and doesn't struggle at all. Here's an interior view showing some of the steelwork within our facility, and this is prior to some of the deck being installed. So it's quite a bit of steel internal, and that's used for supporting a lot of our production equipment and lines contained within the facility. Here's another interior view, which is taken from the north end of our facility, from within it. And this is showing, if you look way down, you can see at the south end of the facility, you can see the roof structure done. But we have a lot of steel, both roof deck, as well as roof trusses, that are all staged currently, waiting to be placed up over the upcoming weeks and months. Quite a bit of logistics to bring in all of this, all of these materials into this space. And that's really the update that we have for right now. I'd like to thank you all for your time, just giving an update. It's been a pleasure working with the City of Victorville, and we're looking forward to progress on this moving forward continually, and we'll be giving some more updates in the future.
Thank you, Eric. Are there any questions?
No, we're just tickled that you're here and tickled with the progress. It looks great.
I was out there just a few days ago, and, you know, the walls are up, and part of the roof is up, and you see all the, what's very important is you see all these, the trades out there, the pipe fitters, the steelworkers, electricians, all these people working. That's very important to our community, to have people working. And because of all this unemployment that we have is very important. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Library Board of Trustees agenda, and the first thing we have is the public comment. And I'll read this one time, but it'll be for the other, for the council and also for the other boards. This is the public comment. This is the time and place for the general public to address the Board of Trustees or the council on any item listed or not listed on the agenda, per Government Code Section State law prohibits the board from addressing any issue not previously included on the agenda. The board may receive testimony and set the matter to a subsequent meeting. Comments are to be limited to three minutes per individual or less as deemed necessary by the chair. Depending upon the number of individuals desiring to speak, all communications are to be addressed directly to the board, not the members of the audience. This is a professional business meeting, and courtesy and decorum are expected. Please refrain from any debate between audience and speaker, making loud noises or engaging in any activity which might be the result to the decorum of the meeting. So at this time, I will have, open up the public comment. And I do have, for I don't know, number one, I do have two cards, and we have David Padilla... Sorry, Dan Padilla.
I want to present a petition that was generated by the West Winds Golf Club.
Give it to our clerk, please.
I'm here from the West Winds Golf Club. I'm the president of the club, and we're trying to squelch the rumor of West Winds Golf Club, or the golf course closing, or been rumored. And we've garnered something like 500, over 500 signatures in opposition to the golf course closing. Several people chose to write letters, and that letter that's going by is generated by a little seven-year-old. But what hurts us is that the city, or entities of the city, would consider closing a recreation facility, when I don't believe in the Victorville area, we have enough recreation facilities. So, so many people that have gone and, I would say, worked at the base, or is working at the base right now, use that facility for golf and to come out and bring their kids and to learn golf and share time with the children. So our position is to try to keep that golf course open as much as possible. I know tax dollars come into the community, and some of the tax dollars should be used to support recreation facilities, not close them. We don't, I don't believe we have enough facilities. So in closing, I just want to make sure that you understand how passionate this is with the people in the community to keep that place open, especially to retired service people that retired out of Georgia Air Force Base and live in the community, continue to live in here because of the people here and the facilities that were offered to them. So please keep that in mind, that we don't have enough recreation facilities. Thank you.
Thank you. I have another card. This is for Saul Rodriguez, Jr.
Thank you for allowing me to address the mayor and the council, city council. I'm also here for the same reason. There has been rumors and articles in the paper about the West Wind Golf Course closing. And basically, we, I'm a member of Zion Luthen Church, and we have had tournaments at that golf course for the past 11 years. We play twice a year, and we normally have anywhere between 40 to 30 members play at that golf course twice a year. We play in the spring and in the fall. And we generate quite a bit of money for them, and we just wondered, there's other courses that we play, but this is a course that we intend on playing at, and basically, we, we play at other golf courses, but from time to time, I'll go to Ashwood Golf Course. And what they do, because of the economy the way it is, they lower their fees to $21 for 18 holes, which is an excellent price. And of course, they get more players playing there because they lower their fees. And this might be something else that the City of Victorville might want to, might want to consider doing, is lowering their fees so that other players can come and play at their golf course for... their golf course for a better, a better fee, better price than what is being charged now. Basically, that's about it, I just want to, would like for you to reconsider keeping West Winds Golf Course open. It's a great way for members of the community to patronize the city's golf course and generate some revenue for the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We're not supposed to respond, but this item is on the, on the budget for tonight, and the recommendation is that it will be closed.
Do you know the date on that is?
I don't know the date, but...
Penalty please, close September one.
September one? Okay, thank you.
Item number two on the library board is revisions to the agenda.
No revisions.
We do have a public hearing, and I would like to, at this time, this is on the budget, and we can take all, all the five entities at the same time?
That's correct, Matt. This public hearing applies to the, I believe, the rail authorities, certainly the airport authority, the redevelopment agency, and the city council agendas, so if you open the public hearing with respect to all of those five entities, with respect to the consideration of the budget, that would be appropriate.
So I'll open up the public hearing to hear arguments for or against the adoption of the resolutions for all the noted agencies, and anybody that wants to speak for or against the budgets for all the entities that were noted, please step to the podium, and boys either do have a card. Norm Miller?
Norm Miller, Mr. Mayor, council members, I had a little help at the beginning here, but they took off. I wanted to mention something about the golf course, too. Matter of fact, I have a couple of things I'd like to talk about tonight. First, on the golf course, when I was on the community services board, the West Winds Golf Course was making money. It's been a couple, three years ago, but I, and I don't know if it still is, but it was at that time, and Green Tree was always being subsidized, we were spending money on Green Tree because we couldn't get enough golfers up there. So, the way I'm looking at that, it doesn't really make sense to have an almost new Mercedes that you have to spend money on all the time, and where you might have an old Chevrolet that just runs and runs and runs. So maybe you need to look at that a little bit closer. If West Winds is still losing money, well then, so be it, but still, I think you need to look at those golf courses a little closer, especially in the economy we have now. The other thing I have is, a couple of years ago, we had about a hundred and seventy people that wanted to get eucalyptus put through to three ninety-five, and I don't know how the budget's working tonight, or how it's been worked up to tonight, but it seems to me some of the decisions have to reflect onto the people's requests or needs, not so much onto the city's needs. And I have nothing against putting in sidewalks, matter of fact, I really appreciate it when they did Sycamore for the school, and if they do more of it for the school, I'll appreciate that, too, but I still think we need some safety for three ninety-five and eucalyptus, and especially with the fire department going in there now, to where they'll need access, probably wouldn't have made any difference, but that nice Victorian house that burned down on three ninety-five, they might have been there a lot quicker than what they were, because it would have been almost a straight shot to that, but when you have wrecks on three ninety-five south of Victorville, that's the fire Department's going to be coming to that, so they don't need to go up to Bear Valley Road to get to that location as they, you know, as problems arise. Anyway, that's my thoughts on that, and I'd just like you guys to look at that.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else for or against the public hearing on adoption of the budgets for the noted agencies in the city council? City of Victorville, correction. Hearing none, I will close the public hearing. I would entertain a motion. I know there's resolutions that we have to note them each individually.
Appropriate just to at least list the resolution numbers of each of the resolutions.
Well, I'm ready to move forward on adopting the budget, and I'd like to reiterate something that was said during the workshop, that this is a living, breathing document. If this economy turns around and things change and money flows into the city of Victorville, then doing things like spending money on building eucalyptus out to three ninety-five has got to be at the top of the list. There are obviously some other things that I'm sure that the council cares deeply about, but I don't want to rehash all of what we did discuss in the workshop, so with that, I'll move for formal adoption of resolution number LBT-09001. There is no rail authority budget. Adoption of SCLA-A, Resolution 09003. Victorville Water District, Resolution VWD-09-011. Victorville Redevelopment Agency, Resolution RDA-09-010. And City of Victorville, Resolution Number 09-072.
Next on the agenda is the Southern California Historic Rail Authority, and also the Airport Authority, and Chairman Caldwell-Wald will chair that, those two items.
Thank you, Mayor Cabralis. There are no revisions or additions to the rail authority agenda, so that agenda would be concluded. On the airport authority, we've already done item one, which is the public comment, and we have done item three, which is public hearing on the adoption of the budget. Item four is a request to execute the Second Amendment to the FedEx sublease for Building 746. Motion would be in order.
No move.
Item five is a request to accept a loan of one-point-seven million from Millionaire for construction of the remote loading racks at the new fuel farm. No questions, a motion would be in order. Six, request authorized the ratification of an emergency action taken by the executive director to accept the award of a one-million-seventy-seven-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-dollar airport improvement program grant from the FAA. I can't imagine anyone being opposed to him taking the initiative to get us a grant in excess of a million dollars. He should be applauded. Where is he?
No approval.
That concludes the airport authority agenda.
Next is the redevelopment agency. We have the public comment on revisions. We had item number three, which was public hearing. Item number four is a request to approve the First Amendment to owner participation agreement by and among the Victorville Redevelopment Agency, WPI Development One, Inc., and WPI Development Two, Inc., Desert Plazas Project. Move approval.
Chairman Cabralis, may I get a vote from you on that item?
We now have the Victorville Water District agenda. Item number two is revision to the agenda.
No revisions.
We have action item number three. Item number four is to consent calendar. No for approval. Item five is a request that the board of directors allow SCW Contracting and Genesis Construction to withdraw their bids and award a contract to Pacific Hydrotech Corporation for construction of Equipment Well Number One Forty-four in the amount of nine-hundred-ninety-five-thousand-two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars.
No.
Number six is a request to approve a contract to Orson USA for the purchase and delivery of the irrigation board for the SCLA Central Waste Water Treatment Facility in the amount of five-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-seven-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Item seven, request to reject the bid received from Royal Wholesale and re-advertise the Motor Control Center purchase package for the SCLA Central Waste Water Treatment Facility.
No approval.
Item number eight, request to award a contract to APV, Inc., for the purchase and delivery of the heat exchanger for the SCLA Central Waste Water Treatment Facility in the amount of one-hundred-and-thirty-three-thousand-seven-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars. No for approval. Item number nine, request to approve a contract to ITT Corporation Sanitar Division for the purchase and delivery of the irrigation distribution equipment for the SCLA Central Waste Water Treatment Facility in the amount of one-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand-and-twenty dollars.
No for approval.
Item number ten, is a request to award a contract to Lakeside Equipment Corporation for the purchase and delivery of inlet fine screens for the SCLA Central Waste Water Treatment Facility in the amount of five-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand-four-hundred dollars. No for approval. Item number eleven, request to award a contract to Trojan Technologies for the purchase and delivery of the UV disinfection equipment for the SCLA Central Waste Water Treatment Facility in the amount of three-hundred-and-twenty-four-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty dollars. Approval. Item number twelve, request to award a contract to Mass Transfer Systems, Inc., for the purchase and delivery of the jet mixer for the SCLA Central Waste Water Treatment Facility in the amount of one-hundred-and-twenty-three-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifteen dollars. No for approval. That concludes the Water District agenda, and we're working together on this project. Dr. Pepler. City of Victorville agenda, revisions to the agenda.
Yes, items five, six, and seven are to be continued to the October twentieth city council meeting, at the request of the city attorney's office.
What's that, six and seven?
Five, six, and seven.
Cabralis, the property, affected property owners have asked for the Level One Caltrans hearing, which they are entitled to under Caltrans provisions. Unfortunately, that creates a delay, and there's nothing...
Okay, we, this is item number two, number three we've dealt with. Item, item number four, we haven't dealt with item number three. This is a continued public hearing. As for the Development Department has requested a continuance of case number DVO-90004 to the meeting of September the fifteenth. I think we continued this once before.
Yes, we did. This is a continued hearing.
So we'll just continue the hearing.
Technically, open the public hearing just as part of the continuance.
I'll open up the public hearing on item number four. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number four?
Mayor Cabralis, just for the record, that's item number three.
I'm, correction, item number three. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item number three? Hearing none, we'll close the, we won't close the public hearing, we'll continue the public hearing to September the fifteenth. And we have item number eight, is consent calendar.
May I, Cabralis, again, before I do that, if you would open just the public hearings on five, six, and seven, which are going to get continued?
Open them up and then...
Open them and then continue them, please.
Okay, I would like to, at this time, then, open up the public hearing for item number five.
You do all three together if you might.
Item five, six, and seven. Anyone wishing to speak for or against item five, six, or seven? Hearing none, we'll continue item five, six, and seven.
For October twentieth.
October twentieth, thank you. Consent calendar?
Approval.
Item number nine, request to designate a voting delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, September the sixteenth to the eighteenth.
I think the mayor should represent the city.
He would, but he's not going to be there.
Mike, that's what, Mike?
Mike, he loves to do it.
Is that a motion?
I'll say move.
Second.
Know whether or not he's going?
Going. I'll hold some favor.
Aye.
Item number ten. A request to discuss the enforcement ordinance number 2218 pertaining to the parking of recreational vehicles, oversized vehicles, and trailers on public streets, driveway, et cetera.
I'd put this one on, and the reason I ask that this be brought back, because we have had it on here before... Reason I ask that this be brought back, because we have had it on here before. It's still where we can have some camper trailers or vehicles parked in the third car garage driveway. But the main thing was, people were confused on all the wherethes and whatfor's and the many, many options for permits. Where they can go ahead and move it a few feet and say, well, they'll just go get another permit, so it stays on the street or in their driveway for a very long time. I have some neighbors now that have theirs in their driveway. It doesn't come out to the sidewalk, but they claim that they don't have to have permits. And I understand, Mr. Webb, get me out of this. The ruling is.
I'll try. There's actually two ordinances. One is for onsite, which, which the Development Department are planning overseas, and one is for on-street, which is off-site. And that is the new ordinance, which, which you're speaking of, I believe is the main one, you're speaking of the most recent one, and that is prepared, and that's basically the responsibility for preparation has been through Engineering and the Traffic Advisory Committee, I believe, over the last couple of years with police help and the city attorney. And they're both going to be enforced by code enforcement predominantly and also by police secondarily, I believe, depending on what the issues are. We have been enforcing the first for quite a long time. The first one, that is the planning ordinance, which is the onsite ordinance, permits RVs to be stored in a third car, in front of a third car garage only, and it must be paved and it cannot hang out in front of the sidewalk, or behind the front plane of the house, or the side plane of a street-side yard. So that it is tucked behind the house, and even on a corner is behind the wall plane on the street side. So it is either behind the front of the house or behind the side of the house, or in the third car driveway. That's the only places that RVs are permitted in a residential, on a residential lot. The new ordinance has to do with the parking on the street, and for that, Sean may be able to speak better to it, I can give the highlights. It's basically, if you want, it's, or you can. Then you can fill in, because I don't know the time, I know the time limits. I do have the notes on the highlights. Basically, they will, Engineering will issue the permits for that, and that's the one you spoke of. It talks about not only RVs, but boats and things of that sort. So boats, anything of that sort, must be attached or hitched to a vehicle, and those can be towed after 24 hours if the RV is being stored, parked, or is not attached to a vehicle. So that's not necessarily a recreational vehicle, a motorhome. Also, those, the minor, the small RVs can be left on the street to load or unload, or I'm sorry, the large RVs can be left to load or unload for up to 48 hours. The new code says if the RV is owned by a visitor and will be longer than, will be there longer than 48 hours, a recreational vehicle parking permit is required. But that is not to be misunderstood, that the visitor can live in the RV on the street, which, which we have had some people thinking, but, but that is to be, a visitor comes to town staying in your home, they can park the RV on the street and get a permit for 48 hours. It must be parked in front of or adjacent to the property being visited. Permits will be issued by Engineering, and violations for not having an RV visitor permit is $100. And I believe Sean has more information on the signage issue, because signs must be posted prior to issuing those. So at this time, we have not, code enforcement has not begun enforcing this, because it's our understanding from the attorneys that we can't until the proper signage is posted. I will note for, for the record that we do not, we are not proactive at this time on RVs, as we have a list of responsibilities that the council has, has selected us to be proactive on, along with the life and safety issues that we must, we must follow up on every day. However, complaint-based, we have issued or been involved in over 200 RV citations or warnings or cases, I should say, in the past year. So we are very active with RVs and complaints, and I believe 35 of those were in Brentwood and 40 of those were Eagle Ranch, which are two of our target areas. So we have been very active, even though we're not really proactive, and if code enforcement does see an obvious violation on the street, you can bet they will act upon it. They're not just going to drive by because they didn't get a call. However, we're not out looking for RVs at this time.
Did I understand you to say that they have to get the permit and then they can stay for up to 48 hours, or they can stay for 48 hours, then they have to get a permit?
No, they must get a permit to stay for the 48, I'm sorry, you're correct. Actually, any RV can be parked in front of a house for up to 48 hours. Now, when somebody comes to town, they're supposed to, at that point, come and get a permit for the 48 hours, but you're correct. They can come for 48 hours, park, and then come and get a permit, or 47 hours, come and get a permit and stay for another 48 hours.
Well, I just wanted to make it clear.
Unless the permit is written in a different way.
I just wanted to make, make sure I understood it, because if somebody decided they wanted to come and visit you for a weekend, I didn't want to have to send them down to your office to get a permit.
It won't be my office, it will be his.
Well, somebody's office to get a permit.
Right. And he may, and Sean may know, I don't know how many times, if you can repeat that cycle, more than two or three, if there's a limit.
Members of the council, the, this ordinance went through exhaustive review by Traffic Advisory, by all of the various agencies that we thought should have input. It was then an ordinance that was written by the City Attorney's Office. There was a, what we believed, a very onerous requirement that for this RV ordinance to be effective, every single city street had to be posted. We finally got that worked out, and we have, I think, 35 locations where the entrances, major entrances to the city, that we have to post a sign before the RV ordinance can become effective. We expect that to be done in the next 30 to 45 days. 30 days thereafter, it becomes effective. So the RV ordinance for parking in the street is not yet effective. The, once it becomes effective, then permits will be required after the first 48 hours. I just don't recall, but there is a limit to the number of times it can be repeated in a one-year period. I think it's 24 permits in a one-year period.
Now, one other question. This has come up before, because I was involved in, anyway, when you have an RV, you live in a cul-de-sac, and house, and you park that RV in front of your house, and you have people coming out of there, they have to go on the opposite side of the street, they can't see an oncoming car. How do we justify that, Sean? That happened next door to me, and my granddaughter was leaving our driveway. She was on the opposite side of the street, and a neighbor was coming home, and it come really close. Now, he lived there, and he owned that RV, well, he's not, the RV's not there anymore, but, but that's my concern. If there's other streets where there's other cul-de-sacs or small places, and they have 48 hours to load to go on vacation, that's fine, but how do we justify the safety?
It's a very difficult issue, and that's why it took so long to get to something that we believed was as workable as it could possibly be. We did considerable research through various transportation organizations, AAA and Institute of Traffic Engineers, to try and find out cities that have ordinances in place, and there's a variety of ordinances with an equal, an equally high number of, variety of rules and how they should be applied. It is just an issue that is very difficult to make the right decision and get it to work for everybody. If somebody owns an RV, you can't prohibit them from parking it in front of the house for even two hours so that they can load up and go on their trip. So there is always going to be that potential of this large vehicle parked in a situation where it makes it difficult for another driver to see. You know, unless we prohibit all large vehicles in all residential areas, and that's not really workable, it's not feasible. And, and so this ordinance, we believed, was a blend of all of the good things that we found from the other cities and their ordinances. I, I agree with you, it's not perfect.
I have a question, Sean.
Yeah.
On the signage, what's the requirement and where do you post these?
It's deemed to be the major entrances into the city, and so we have identified somewhere between 30 and 35 streets that we, that would be on the city boundary, on a major street entrance, including state highways. The sign basically alerts the public that parking of an RV in the city of Victorville is prohibited without a permit and cites the municipal code.
That means the requirement, the legal requirements that.
That's right.
You should do.
Yes, and until we do that, we couldn't write a ticket.
I don't have a dog in this hunk, because I don't own an RV, and I, and I'm not going to quarrel with Ms. Allman's concern about safety in the cul-de-sac, because I don't live in a cul-de-sac, so I don't have any experience. But no matter how fine-tuned you and Mr. DeBartonowski have made this, it is going to be hugely controversial. I think we're going to have lots of people coming to the podium to tell us how unreasonable we are, because you're going to be goring a lot of oxes, and I think that you're going to see some litigation. Andre's obviously happy about that, but, and I'm, I don't mean to trivialize the issue, but, you know, I, I have to say, when we whack 32% of our budget out tonight and lay off 40 people with prospects for laying off more, I have a hard time spending a ton of money researching and doing all the things that have to be done to come up with something that will be so imperfect that it's going to cause, it's going to replace one problem, perhaps, and create a series of more expensive problems. I don't think we can regulate ourselves as a society into perfection. I, I just, I feel sorry for you folks trying to administer this. I think you're going to have a nightmare.
You did a good job, anyway.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean.
Item number 11. A request to discuss a policy for a proactive code enforcement activity. Mr. Cox?
I, I have no information at this time. I only heard the, the way that the code enforcement works, and you heard the budget earlier, and council wants to acquire some kind of a proactive policy for code enforcement that's different than what we have. I have nothing to suggest on this item.
I spoke with Mr. Webb, and I think we're already doing it.
I think so.
I think, I think code enforcement is very proactive, and I thank him for explaining the whole thing to us, so I think we're, we're on the right road.
Item number 12. Request to approve the annual contract with Innovative Federal Strategies in the amount of $84,000.
Move approval.
Second.
Councilmember Allman, may I get a vote? I just entered a yes vote for you, is that correct? Wasn't showing on my screen, so I entered it for you.
Let's go. Can we do it again?
That's okay, I've, I've done it. If it was a yes vote, that's all I need to know.
Yeah, it shows yes on my screen.
Thank you.
Item 13 is request to approve the annual agreement with Joe Goncalves and son for professional legislative representation in the amount not to exceed $33,240.
Second.
Item 14 is a request to approve the following amendments to the Brinkerhoff Service Provider Agreement with Parsons for plan specification estimates for the Lamesa Rottenis Quale, wrote I-15 interchange, A, appropriation of $550,000 under 2019 CIP, B, amend the service provider agreements with Parsons, Brinkerhoff, Quayle, and Douglas for added design tasks and increase the not-to-exceed amount by $497,000.
No approval.
Item 15 is a request to approve Resolution Number 09073. A resolution to adopt Tax Equity and Financial Responsibility Act policies and procedures for requested TFR hearings.
No approval.
Second.
Item number 16 is the request to adopt Resolution Number 09074. Resolution approving, authorizing, and directing execution of a joint exercise of powers agreement relating to California Municipal Finance Authority in approving the issuance of revenue bonds by the authority for the purpose of financing the development of certain facilities for the benefit of Victorville Pacific Associates.
Approval.
Second.
Item 17 is council reports. Mr. Caldwell?
None.
Ryan?
None.
Well, the council adjourned. Thank you very much.